That's not that hard to do.
I know, I just need to get something in to do it.
Is now the town having a random, random ops?
The Vice President, the Vice President should be.
Hi, Nolly, how you doing?
Yeah, and that traffic is going there. Yeah. We'll see how long it lasts.
And a call to order the Morrisville Borough, Borough Council meeting for Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. Can we please stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Give a roll call, please. Here.
Here.
Captain Parker?
Here.
Captain Paul?
Here.
Captain Robinson?
Here.
Captain Sherlock?
Here.
Here.
All right, we're going to move on to item number four, which is announcements and presentations. Four A is the 21st Century Community Learning Center, and the subject is the School Violence Prevention Program.
Good evening. Dave Revella, Mayor, asked me on Friday to come and kind of chat about the grant. It's not a 21st Century grant, it's a Borough of Morrisville grant, School Violence Prevention Program grant, so it has nothing to do with 21st Century. I just happen to be the person associated with 21st Century who wrote the grant for the Police Department in partnership with the Chief, as well as Jason Harris from Morrisville School District, and Elaine McDowell and Jeff McCusker from Holy Trinity School. So, the grant was submitted in May of 2019. Initially, the grant was submitted for about $382,000, of which DOJ, Department of Justice, approved it for $337,000-ish, and $253,000 are coming from DOJ to be used for the grant, and the $84,000 difference to be made up for the grant. We really have not had the in-depth conversations, because I know the biggest question is, is the Borough on the hook, as you will, for the grant? There are a variety of ways that we could pay for that $84,000, part of which discussions could be had with both Holy Trinity, as well as Morrisville School District, and their principals, superintendents, and boards in reference to paying portions towards the $84,000, in addition to the persons that could be hired, could do in-kind contributions for the grant to offset the cost. So, the purpose of the grant, only the Borough, only the Police Department could apply, Morrisville School District could not. The goal is that we are creating safer environments for the school districts, that the police departments have eyes into the school to see what's going on. Primarily, the grant is really based on equipment, but also safety trainings that could happen, not just for the Morrisville Police Department, but also for the administration and the teachers at the schools, as well as educating the students in reference to safety procedures. So, that is the grant. It's a two-year grant. It was effective 10/1 of 2019, runs through September 30th of 2021. The grant was accepted by the Mayor. However, you're not obligated to keep the grant, other than the initial conversations that were had with Morrisville, Holy Trinity, the Chief, myself, and the Mayor in reference to the grant. That's about it. One requirement that we do have to do for the grant, first and foremost, is a vulnerability assessment. The Chief has an organization that he had in mind, Vulnerability Solutions. The goal is that they would come out and really assess the property. Holy Trinity nor Morrisville School District has had a vulnerability assessment, so we do know that the grant and the way it looks and the equipment that's in there today can change based on the recommendations from the agency that the Chief suggested that we outreach to. So, that's really where we are. You have reports that are due. If you should accept the grant, they're due by the end of this month. It's in reference to what have we done programmatically, if anything, and how much money has been spent. So, that's really where I am. I was just the person who wrote the grant on behalf of the Borough, as I have written grants in the past for the Borough. Never requested to be paid for it, it's what we're supposed to be doing to support and be there to support the safety of our schools and the Police Department.
A long story short, the Borough is not on the hook for any of this money. This will be absorbed through the grant and through contributions by both schools. That is real, that's the real reason why it was really never brought to the council. Just like every five years, I do a ballistic vest grant through DOJ. And I never bring that back to council, it's money that they give us. So, we have to buy these vests every five years, they just give us the money. So, just like this, you are not on the hook for this money.
May I ask a question? There were some concerns and allegations several months ago that the, the sky was crashing down on us, and this was going to be the end of the world because of this grant. None of that is true, correct?
No.
Thank you.
If I may, so, with the risk of what I know is going to happen anyway, which people get painted out to hate the children and so forth around here, I'm going to, I'm going to speak my mind a little bit on this. First and foremost, I appreciate what you do, Darletta, let me first say that, because I really respect you and like, and like your involvement in the community, and I appreciate everything you do. The grant is not a Morrisville grant right now, because it was never brought to council, and from a policy and procedure perspective, council has to approve even the application process, even if there's no cost. I understand that we were, council, we went around council, the Mayor, who does not have the authority to sign for this grant, signed for it. So, ethically speaking, we didn't do the right thing, and I'm sure this council, if it wants to move forward with, with this grant, can vote to, you know, wash their, clean their hands of it and move forward. That said, when I read the grant, this is, this is what I see. $337,411 is the full amount of the grant, with 80-plus thousand being monies that, although we're saying the Borough is on the hook for, it's monies that we don't have anything in writing from any other organizations stating that they're going to do anything for this. So, we have a risk of being on the hook for that if we approve it. That said, 39% of this money, and that's the full amount, including the $80,000 match, is going to salaries. 30% is going to contracts and consultants. 9.3% is going to equipment and tech. Supplies is 7.2% of this grant, and training and travel is 14.3% of this grant. So, of the $337,411, there's under $100,000 that's going to anything other than consultants, contracts, and salaries, and that's my concern. The return on this investment seems a little bit skewed when almost 40% of it is going towards salaries, and another 30% is going towards contracts and consultants. That's my concern with it, not helping the children, I want to help the children. I personally spend my time volunteering for things that are specifically for the children in Morrisville. I'm not anti-children, but this is a bad contract, guys. Thank you.
So, the initial conversation point well noted, and I knew that once we, we did apply for a waiver for the $84,000, unfortunately, we were not granted the $84,000. And just to go back, my initial conversation with Dave Revella was, the goal was that you would hire, that's the way the grant was written initially. If you let me oversee the grant, I would waive that $84,000, because I understand the importance. It's a no-brainer grant, it's really, really easy in reference to getting the reporting done, the financials, I would have to work with the Borough Manager in reference to that. But to give that back was something I outright said to both the Chief, to the Mayor, to Jason Harris, as well as Elaine McDowell, because that's how much I believe in the importance of the grant, and, and putting that money towards the equipment, and purchasing more equipment that we know we're going to have to do after we get the vulnerability assessments.
And I do appreciate you for that. My only concern with that would be, you're going to be on the hook for having to pay taxes, and you're giving that money away, you're going to have to pay payroll taxes, and then you're going to hand that money over. That's going to affect you as, as an individual, and I hope you've put that consideration in, because it's going to put you into a different tax bracket.
That is something that, we can follow it with DOJ, but they did say that that's something that we could do.
If I may, we've heard a lot of things here, and they don't really contradict, as Darletta had mentioned, we don't really know where we're going with the grant as far as dollars and cents, because we don't know cost, we don't know this. But again, the Borough had, via social media, some, I shouldn't say the Borough, some members of council, I believe, it's my understanding that they were questioning where the money would come from. Again, as you heard, the school districts were in-kind contributions. This isn't going to affect the Borough taxes, the Borough budget. And if someone wants to say, I don't have the authority to sign a grant, they could say whatever they want. I sign grants all the time on behalf of the Police Department, I, I'm the, as Mayor, I am also the highest elected official in the Borough. I've signed grants, actually, not that long ago, for the Fire Department, because they needed someone. So, this was to actually to reassure the people at home that the school district is going to be, and the grant itself pays for itself. Something that I would like to see council consider and actually act on is, I think Darletta should be the administrator of the grant. She wrote the grant, she's familiar with the grant, she's been in contact with the Department of Justice, I'm sure this week alone, she's talked to them. And as she said, as things develop, as costs come in for different things, it'll be changing, so you need somebody that really understands the work, the inner workings of this, so. I'd like to see her do it. We don't even know as far as what professionals we're going to have in the Borough to do it, because it's my understanding that the council put out, or actually had made a motion to put out RFPs for different professionals, so. Darletta's a constant in this thing, and she's done it before, she's, was the driving force for the COPS grant, which saved the Borough a lot of money, brought that officer into our school district, and my opinion, Darletta, and not to embarrass you, but you're an unsung hero of this Borough, and I want to thank you personally.
Thank you, and the other thing I just want to have on record is, we need to have those in-depth conversations with Jason Harris and the Borough, and his board, as well as Elaine, before we can, can commit their dollars and cents without really saying, this is what the end result will be, and we really won't know that until we get the vulnerability assessments done, and the evaluations done in partnership with the Chief, and based on their recommendations.
I'd like to say something, please. May I speak?
Sure.
Okay. I'm really disappointed that, I just heard that this started in May, and it is now January, and we haven't been told anything about it. It's never been brought to council, and why is the Borough in charge of it, why can't the school do it?
DOJ makes the, please department do it. And in DOJ's regulations, there is nothing that says it has to be endorsed by the council. It has to be endorsed by the Mayor. So, we did exactly what they asked us for, and when one of the council people up there tell me this is unethical, I think that personally, this is not unethical. It's all done through the Department of Justice, and if it was, I'm sure they would have a problem. This is their grant, we put in for it, it's not unethical.
You're going to be using time and money from the Borough to do this?
Who?
Because you're going to be using the Borough Manager's time, correct?
Maybe.
Pardon?
Maybe.
Well, Darletta had mentioned that she was going to have to be working with the-
They're also going to be using my time, too.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's not, we've always worried about in the past, that is it the money coming out of our pocket? Money's not coming out of our pocket.
All right, say scenario. I was with Morrisville first, that was started years ago, I don't know if you even know about it, but money was mismanaged.
Okay.
And it turned into an ugly mess, and it was called back, what was left. Now, who's to say that this is not mismanaged? Now, I trust Darletta, I know she's a good person, and she'll oversee what she can, but that doesn't mean that the people she's paying are going to do what they're supposed to do with the money.
Well, that's where also I come in, and for the last six years, my budget has been under budget, and has been very straightforward to everybody. So, if you're going to tell me I'm going to mismanage the money, that's not going to happen.
No, I didn't say that. I'm just saying other, like-
I will, I will be one of the supervisors over this grant, and I will be watching every dollar, like I do every other day, 365 days a year with the-
I'm just disappointed that it's been hidden from council.
It wasn't hidden. No, I wanted to address that.
It was brought to our attention.
Well, you're wrong.
No, I'm not.
Yeah. I personally gave the council, once I was made aware of it, I signed off, I think it was in October, we did a press release, I made sure that the Borough, you received it in your packet.
Yeah, in October.
Well, that's when I signed it.
It started in May.
Yeah, but I wasn't involved with it. The Borough, this is not a Borough grant, the Borough wasn't involved with it then.
They said it's a Borough grant.
You're not listening clearly, this is a DOJ grant.
Who's in charge of it? Overseeing it?
At this point, no one. I just recommended that we make Darletta-
No, I mean, who was overseeing the grant itself, if we receive it? Who is in charge of making sure that it's done right?
Me.
And dotting the t's and crossing the i's, or dotting the i's, crossing the t's? Who's in charge of that? Does that not come down to the Borough?
No.
You're going to guarantee that?
Yes, it's my understanding.
And just to answer for you, Ms. Dreisbach, definitely understand the concern, because we will work with the Chief, we will work with the Borough Manager in reference to the finances, the checks coming in, things of that nature. That is a true statement, as we, as well, we'll be working with Jason Harris, who is a part of that process. And historically, in the grants, the administrators are just kind of assumed to be a part of it, but I understand your concern in reference to the time and talent that could be pulled away from your manager, and we would be very conscious to make sure that everything is transparent, showing the invoices, when they're coming in, and what it looks like, to prevent so much time of your manager to be tied up in it. Should he or she be aware? Absolutely, transparency is the key. I'm like terrified up here, but I do appreciate transparency. I was floored in reference to learning about later the process, because the Chief and I had done grants in the past, and it never came up as the way it did in this format, but, and those grants were matching grants or contributions of that grant, so I can understand and I respect transparency, or feeling as if it wasn't transparent. However, if we should go for it, and I'm working with that, any reports, any information, I will sit with Borough, because I don't want to be standing up here again, in reference to information that should have been clarified, or should have been known to be out there. That's not the way I work, that's not the way I do business, I don't want Ivans, even associated, to think that we're not transparent, and I'm not going to cry, buddy.
We shouldn't have had to read it in the paper.
It's not Darletta's fault, though.
And I respect that.
Before election time, yeah.
And I respect that, so I think going forward with the new council in place to know what the policies and procedures are, and how you want something presented and update monthly, that's easy. Quarterly reports that have to go to DOJ, that you guys are getting that information, however you would like to see it, how many meetings you would like for me to come and answer, I'm willing to do that, because I can respect the feeling of not knowing.
And what is the end result of this grant, once it's done?
So, when you say the end result?
What do you plan on accomplishing with this grant?
It's a grant for the safety and security of the children in our school district.
All right, all right, this is it.
But I want to know how they're going to accomplish it.
That's enough, that's enough.
We're bringing in a vulnerability company.
Yeah.
Okay, every school in the state of Pennsylvania needs to have one, and they are required to have one, so we're getting ahead of this. Okay, that our schools will have this vulnerability study. From there, we will take their recommendations, and we will sit down with the school districts, the parochial and the public school district, and say, this is what they are recommending you do, this is what it's going to cost, what are you going to be able to provide towards this? How much are we going to be able to take from in-kind? Hopefully, better cameras, more lighting over here at the school for daytime and nighttime, every time, better cameras over there, panic buttons, better entrances into the school. You have a Catholic school over here, that is from, you tell me, 1940?
1952.
1952. It's a security nightmare. So, that's what we're trying to get to, and we have something that's going to give us some of the money towards it, and it's going to be done the way it's supposed to be done.
And we feel $31,000 will help, because that's what's for equipment and tech for installation.
Did you miss what Darletta said?
No.
Yeah, you did.
No, I didn't.
What about the $85,000?
What about it? We don't have any guarantees on it. All right, all right.
I'm not going to give an argument about this.
If, if I may, though, I do have- No, no, I'm done, I'm done with the interrupting everybody and back and forth.
But it's going to increase the security, where there's also money for training for the officers, we're going to bring Philadelphia SWAT up again, and we're going to do more active shooter training, that'll be paid for out of this grant at the schools.
All right, the Borough Manager has one question, and then we're done. All right, unless Darletta has anything more you want to add.
I just wanted to also reply to Mr. Jaeger, so, we know that we can, after speaking again to DOJ, after we do the vulnerability assessment, we do expect that that equipment grant will go up. Also in the grant, if you see the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, that was the initial conversations, where they come out to do the assessment, surveillance is also listed under that, we've already spoke, the Chief said, nope, we want that surveillance there, so that budget line will be moved over as well. Another thing that was suggested, and we talked to with the IU, which, for Jason Harris' blood kit, so that's like a new push right now. In the event that there is an intruder into the school, and God forbid, somebody is injured, that each classroom now has an emergency kit, that not just the teachers learn how to do, but also the students, if they have to do a tourniquet to save somebody's life. So, that's something else that was incorporated into the grant, and those are things that we're looking at, that we have the flexibility to at least go back to DOJ and say, we don't need as much, can we bring that down, can we make it more cost-effective? So, those are the things with grants, we can go back and forth in reference to conversations to get approval. All those approvals from DOJ would come in writing from our program officer that has been assigned. So, we could not move forward to do anything without that approval, but once again, if you were to go back and look at the Bucks County Intermediate Unit budget line, it's almost $100,000, $45,000 of it is surveillance. So, initially, the conversations, because the Bucks County Intermediate Unit has, I guess what they would call a war room, and the safety resource officers go up there, to kind of see, have conversations and dialogue, they would also like to have eyes into the schools. God forbid, something happens, now there's something in Upper County to support the Chief and the schools in Lower County. So, that dollar amount is also up for discussion, because we definitely want more of that equipment to be utilized down here in the Morrisville area. Please know that when I wrote that grant, and I was getting some of that dollar amount, I was on vacation in California, but we knew that we could make adjustments and changes as we can with most of the grants that we work with, as long as you're transparent, you're having those conversations, you're getting approval, and getting it back to you. So, hopefully, that answers your question.
Could I just clarify a couple of things? You said that the request was made for a grant waiver, and that was denied, right?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay, so now the conversation is going to turn to the two schools, the public school and the parochial school, about splitting some share of that liability?
Correct.
Okay.
So, it would have to be conversations and they approve it.
Right, okay, and you mentioned something about a deadline that's the end of this month, what was that deadline?
So, if you should choose to keep the grant, you do have a report that's due by January 30th. So, once again, we were on the phone with DOJ in reference to going in to do the SF425 piece of it, where we're acknowledging what we spent, if anything, and what program pieces happened, if anything, for that, and they said, for the most part, most districts, your most grants, grantees haven't done anything yet. We've just had the initial conversations, and then when the Mayor said, let's hold off on doing anything until January, to come in and speak to the Board, we really haven't touched anything, other than putting the vulnerability assessment piece in place, if the Board should allow us to go forward. They are scheduled for Thursday to go into Holy Trinity, as well as to go in February to Morrisville School District. So, they said it's about a two-month turnaround for those reports to come out.
So, the idea is to have the vulnerability prior to that-
Correct.
-deadline and that report being filed?
Well, no, we wouldn't have it by the 30th. It's just if you, as a Board, say, yes, we want to go forward, then I would, you know, the vulnerability assessment group would come out on Thursday.
Okay.
So that they could start the process, because it's a two-month turnaround before those reports are completed.
So, it sounds like you need an answer from council tonight, since they won't meet again before the end of the month?
Only because if you're not going to go forward, I would hate to have somebody come out and do something, and we turn the grant back, correct.
Right, right. Is there a way to get that deadline extended that you're aware of?
I could absolutely call Brian tomorrow, I can follow up with Ms. McDowell.
To the DOJ, or are you talking about Thursday's assessment?
No, no, I'm talking about the end of the month deadline.
Well, the deadline is just the quarterly report, so it would have covered October, November, and December.
Where nothing happened.
Correct, correct. So, we, we have to submit it, or send the grant back, if you will, or say as to why we're not completing, you know, the reports that are required, that the Mayor signed off on, that we would have.
You don't want to start off asking for extensions on the first one.
Yeah, that's, that's where I was kind of going.
It could be basically zeros, or it could be the in-kind, where Darletta's been working on it, and actually put, you know, hours for dollars, and there's $3,000 already to the in-kind.
Mr. Parker?
So, when, so when do you need an answer from council on what their wishes are?
And the question could also be, Mr. Mitchell, just to call the Vulnerability Solutions and say, we need to change the date, go back to Ms. McDowell or Mr. McCusker to give you more time to think about it, whatever. I just would hate for somebody to come out and start a process, and then come back as a team and say-
I just, I have a feeling that there's probably nine different viewpoints on this up here right now, but I'll defer back to the council president.
Mr. Parker?
One second, the solicitor had a question.
I was listening carefully, did you say you received the money already?
No, no, so what happens with the grant- So what happens with the grant is when we receive the invoicing, we submit it to DOJ. DOJ will then cut you a check within, I'm going to say, 20 days. The Borough has 10 days to cut that check to the vendor. So if we're not cutting that check to the vendor and paying that bill within 10 days, according to DOJ, we're not in compliance.
So the money goes, am I on?
No. Goes on. Yeah, it's the opposite.
The money will come in--
Does the--
Morrisville Borough, they will write the check out.
I was just asking, so the money, so the money has to come to the governing body, Morrisville Borough?
Correct.
From Department of Justice.
No, I'm aware. I'm just saying, the money comes to the governing body, which is Morrisville Borough.
Correct.
Mr. Parker?
Okay. Go ahead.
I'd like to suggest that we put this motion to accept or not accept on the agenda this evening and do it before public comment, and so that they have an opportunity to speak about it.
Sorry, Mr. President. Could I impose for another question? If it's not 21st Century Community Learning Center, who is it? It's Ivans House?
In terms of what?
In terms of how it should read here on the agenda for a--
It's Borough of Morrisville, SVPP, Grant Police Department. It's your grant.
Oh, okay, so then you're not named at all.
That's what I was saying, 21st Century--
I got you.
--had nothing--
I'm with you. No, no, I just wanted to clarify.
That's why I just wanted that clarified as well.
Thanks, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. President, is there going to be--
So I think what you want to do, if council wants to make a motion, to move to 9F, the Morrisville Borough School Violence Prevention Program grant, and whether to accept such from Department of Justice.
And if I may suggest, that makes sense to me, but if I may suggest, make a 9G, which would name Darletta as the administrator of the grant. That way, it's clarified because as of now, no one knows who that would be. And as you heard, everyone heard, she's more than willing to continue working on the grant.
While we're figuring that all out, I just want to personally thank Darletta for volunteering to do this. I mean, she's got plenty on her plate from Ivans Center, I can assure you of that, and 21st Century Grants, and I think for her to take the time out and do this voluntarily and then come here and have to put up with a lot of static is difficult, but I appreciate it. Thank you, Darletta.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Darletta.
Yes?
The suggestion by the mayor to, for us to, is it approve or appoint Darletta? Is that, does it matter what we use?
Designate.
Designate. Thank you.
When we move on to public comment, I just want to say something. My first business meeting, and I'm getting my footing, but I'm going to say this, and I'm going to say this only once. I am not going to allow us to become chaotic like we just have. All right? You want to speak, you can speak, but you need to ask the chair for permission first. Some people did, some people didn't, but I will not tolerate these outbursts like this. Contain yourself, act professional, and ask permission to speak when the time is right. Item five is public comment. You have three minutes after you say your name and address.
If you could state your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Stephen Fowler. I live at 444 Hillside Avenue in Morrisville. I've been a resident for a little over 15 years now, and what I wanted to talk about tonight was the Williamson Park, you know, plans for development and Borough Council's, some items that I wish that they would consider going forward. Unfortunately, I did not bring enough copies for everybody. I brought only five copies. I didn't realize that I'd have to give you all some copies, but I'll leave you what I have and bring down any others that you require.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fowler, is this related to this document here? Is that where you're talking about?
I don't know.
The leases, the old, the church leases? Is that what you're talking about?
No.
Oh, okay. No, I'm sorry, that'll be the next person, I guess.
So anyways, I had some items that I wanted Borough to consider going forward when considering any development or redevelopment, that it's going to occur in Morrisville and specifically with Williamson Park. We know that the size of Williamson Park is approximately 40-some acres. However, I'd be interested to know, is there an assessed value for that, for that particular, you know, property? I'm not asking for answers for tonight. I don't expect, you know, the council to have, you know, answers. Is the property under consideration, Williamson Park being sold to the developer, the intended developer, or is it being given to the developer in consideration of future taxes from any properties that are built? And if the latter, what are the tax implications and burden for the Morrisville taxpayer? And that's really my concern for, you know, for all of this, you know, going forward. Who will own the developed property? What incentives, if any, are being offered or incentivized by the redevelopment authority of the county of Bucks? If it's known at this time, what if any tax abatements are being requested or will be offered to facilitate the development? What's the estimated tax burden on the Morrisville ratepayers and for how many years? And again, this is something that the Morrisville taxpayers do need to be aware of for their planning as well. Many people, besides myself, like to plan out their taxes for a year, a couple of years in advance. As regarding infrastructure costs, developers pay an infrastructure, you know, payment to the town. The question is, in 2020, is it going to be adequate if the infrastructure development does not occur until, say, 2022, or 23, or 24, at some point, you know, going forward? Those contributions never really fully adequately cover the, all the costs that will be incurred for the, you know, by the Borough. So any planned or accepted contributions need to be sufficient to cover the increases in developmental costs that are going to be incurred by the Borough, parts and labor and so on. And again, I don't know if this has been researched by the Borough Council, but if yes, they do need to be made public and shared. As far as social infrastructure costs, if we're going to have a hotel that's going to be built on the corner of Bridge Street and Delmore Avenue, Morrisville is currently dependent on a ladder truck from Falls Township for high-rise fire, the same as we are for a high-rise fire that may occur to senior housing on Pennsylvania and Hillcrest. What testing of the emergency response of trucks from Falls has been done or will be done for the various traffic times, especially rush hour, AM and PM? The results of that testing needs to be made public as well. The impact of additional students on the Morrisville school system, while the developer appeals an additional 30 students may be, maybe coming into the school system, it's entirely possible that there may be, you know, 50 or more that come in. It is not a matter of simply adding a homeroom teacher.
That's your time.
Okay. I'll be happy to bring copies to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, if you'd like, if you give Virginia or myself one copy, we can distribute it to all of council in their next delivery, if you would like.
Good evening. I'm Don Rice. I live at 343 Crown Street in Morrisville. Mr. Mitchell held up the lease that I provided for you. I just came across that in my research on Williamson Park. I thought you might be interested in it. So I am just giving it to you to look at. It's a, I think it's a little bit of a provocative document, but take a look at it and see what you think. That's all, the only purpose I had in giving it to you. I'm making no comment on it. As I said, I found that while looking into Williamson Park. I'm a groundwater hydrologist. I worked at USGS for 23 years. I got a master's from Western Kentucky University in karst hydrology, and I was on the MMA for about 12 years. I am here specifically to ask you to give me some more time than three minutes to present some very technical issues related to Williamson Park. I'm not going to talk to you about my position on the development. I am just going to talk to you about Williamson Park, if you grant me the time. There are issues such as the levee, not the structure of the levee, but how the levee affects the hydrology of the park. Then you are all probably aware there's an old channel that goes through the park. It's what made the island, and it has been filled in, and that has a hydrologic impact as well as a potential pollution impact. The topography of Williamson Park is rather unique, and I wanted to speak to that. The drains of Williamson Park are very unique. There are no functional drains for the park in high water, none. There's the church property. If you like, in that lease on, I think it's page two, towards the bottom, there are some distances and bearings that are used to describe the parcel that the churches own. And I have made a map of that using those factors. I was able to recover one of the points, and it's an approximation, but I can show you approximately the area that they own. There are complicating factors in the hydrology of Williamson Park. Now Williamson Park is located at the boundary between two physiographic provinces. It's really unique. It's between the coastal plain and the Piedmont. What effect does that have on Williamson Park? Williamson Park is at the head of tide of the Delaware River. The tide of the Delaware River at the Trenton Makes Bridge changes daily, and it changes by eight feet on average. That's a lot. So that has a big factor, effect on the park. One of the things it affects is groundwater flow in the park. You are aware that in the 2005 flood, I believe it was, the pool popped up out of the ground. That was from groundwater. So as I said, I'd like to address these issues in more depth than I can possibly do in three minutes and explain this to you. I will not make any statements regarding what actions I think the council should take. I want to give you this information so that you can make an informed decision, and that's all I ask. 15 minutes is a minimum. If you want to give me any more than that, that's fine, but that's what I'm asking for.
Does that need to be this evening?
No, it does not. As a matter of fact, I'm not prepared to do it this evening. I have, would want to bring handouts and, and probably be like a PowerPoint that I would do in relation to this.
Okay. Well, certainly, we could arrange that if council was willing. I assume this is triggered from the developer's conceptual proposal from back in August, but I can tell you--
It is. That's what got my attention, and as a hydrologist, I look at it from that perspective, and the hydrology of Williamson Park, the location of Williamson Park is almost unique, I would say. It's in a really unusual location, and there are things I would like you to know before you make your decision.
Just so you're aware, there's no decision in the offing anytime in the near future. The developer has not had any meetings with us here at the Borough or further conversation other than a couple of phone calls since that evening. So it'll probably be months before that circles around again, and it would have to go through--
I'm in no rush.
Several levels of approval.
I understand.
Planning, commission, zoning, hearing board, all that kind of stuff, so.
And I am aware that Mr. McGrath also has a copy of that lease. He, we got it from the same place.
Yep. Actually, it's, just so council's aware, the speaker provided a summary copy, a copy of the lease documents that we have in storage downstairs because they didn't have Word Perfect in 1885. So this is a typed summary version, and we'll share it with council in your next delivery.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. I gave it to, called in and sent it at the end, like four o'clock yesterday, and that was the deadline.
Yep.
So I apologize for that, but that's when I transcribed it because it was hard to read otherwise.
Yep. Thank you. I'm sorry, did you have any--
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Next is Mary Herenda, Runda, sorry if I'm mispronouncing.
I answered to either one.
Okay.
Everybody says-- I'm Mary Herenda, and I live with Don, my husband, at 343 Crown Street in Morrisville. I am a retired hydrogeologist with 22 years' experience, and most of those were with the New Jersey DEP. I worked on contaminated sites. Anyhow, that's apropos to my comment, and this is also about Williamson Park. At the time of the 2002, 2004, 2005, and 2006 floods, we were living here. And I remember about 2005, 2006, thinking how good it was that Morrisville had the wisdom and foresight to keep most of the area right next to the river as open space due to its vulnerability to flooding, since we had just, were experiencing, in the middle of experiencing three floods in a row, mostly affecting Williamson Park and Delmore Avenue. Williamson Park is going to flood again. As you may recall, the river didn't overtop the levee during those floods at all in 2005, four, or five, or six. The levee is about 30 feet in elevation at its lowest point, according to the Army Corps of Engineers webpage. The highest flood that has occurred since the levee was built in 1955 was approximately 28 and a half feet in elevation in 1955. In 2004, the flood river elevation at the USGS gauging station in Trenton was 23.41 feet. In 2005, it was 25.33 feet in elevation, and 2006, 25.09 feet in elevation. In these floods, during these floods, much of the flooding did not, rather than coming over the levee, came down the canal, and there's no reason that that could not happen If Williamson Park is developed into residential and commercial uses, it will increase the impervious surface and make flooding more frequent and worse. Don will go into that in his presentation. It's rather complex, and I'm not going to get into it in three minutes. And if there were flooding with cars and residences in there, there would be increased pollution. There were cars would leave gasoline and oil and transmission fluid and other fluids into the park. If residences are flooded, household chemicals like insecticides, herbicides, fertilizer, pharmaceuticals, cleaning fluids would all be released to the river in the flood. The endangered Atlantic sturgeon lives and spawns on the other side of the levee from Morrisville, and this would endanger wildlife in the river. So flooding could actually, if there were people living in the park, in apartments, they could be stranded either inside or outside their building. You know, even though their apartment on the third or fourth floor would not be flooded, they might be stuck because they, the floodwaters would keep them inside or outside. They, you know, people elderly and kids and stuff like that that might need some care would be stranded. like that, that might need some care, would be stranded. They would also lose property. So I think, you know, that would be a public safety concern. And so I do comment, one way or the other, about this. I think that making the park anything but open space is a really bad idea. And I hope you don't do it. I hope you keep it a park. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Mr. Parker?
Yeah.
Let's finish public comment first.
Okay.
Dave Nay.
Ladies and gentlemen of council, thank you for your time, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor. I guess first, I want to say that I've had the opportunity to--
If you could state your address for the record.
David Nay, 187 Center Street. Thank you. I just want to state for the record that I have had opportunity to work with Darletta Barry Johnson on a couple of occasions. She has the highest ethics and integrity and character. And to suggest otherwise even remotely is not only insulting, but an abomination. I think she is owed an apology by someone on this council, frankly. The other thing I wanted to speak on, I had a question regarding our budget, I believe on page two, I think it was item 1300000, it was the cash carried forward. I believe we showed about a $200,000 cash forward from last year to this year with a difference of about $100,000. Was that from the previous year, Mr. Mitchell?
That, I believe, is a projection for this year.
Okay. So the 200,000 carried forward was what we carried forward from last year, then?
Well, fell short of that. I believe the final number was like 118,000.
So it was a, just shy of $100,000 less than what we actually voted on? When we voted in December, it was 200,000. You're saying it's actually coming--
No, no, you're talking about the 2020 budget.
Yes.
Right. And no, no, I'm referring to 18 to 19.
Okay. The 2020 budget showed a $200,000--
Correct.
Carry forward. And is that accurate?
Well, we don't know yet. The final year-end financial statement isn't out yet. Won't be available till February or March.
Okay. So we'll know what the exact number is--
Yes.
--and whether that held true or not going forward.
Correct. Or how close. But remember also that, and you were all told this, that that's an estimate that was developed based on a projection back in the summer when we were working on the budget.
Well, if I remember correctly, the date on the actual budget itself was through December, sorry, October 31st.
I think it was September.
It was October. 10/31 is the final budget.
Final, right. The proposed was 9/30.
Yeah. So, so I'm referring to the final budget, 10/31.
Yes.
And what we actually voted on in December.
Correct.
So you're saying that's likely going to change?
I'm sure. Just like the previous year and the previous year before that.
Is that going to go down or up?
I expect it'll be less.
It'll be less?
Yes.
And this is, I think, is a good, good thing for the new incoming council members to take note on how fluid the budget is. You know, sometimes I refer to it as a giant shell game, because these things tend to change so much. So I just wanted to, you know, point that out to them going into their first budget.
Plus, it makes it sound like there's one where really, I'm sorry, this isn't for public comment, but the budget's made up of 33 different funds.
Right.
And it complicates matters.
Yeah, yeah. Not an easy--
No.
--task to manage. The other thing I'd like to speak on was, I believe it's 9C, the rehiring of Gary Zampano. I just want to remind everyone that their primary responsibility as council members is the health, safety, and welfare of this community. And I hope you will vote accordingly tonight to reflect that. I will say, I believe it was last week, Ms. Berger mentioned the Manning table being at 10. While that is true, the Manning table does not tell us what we actually need for our community regarding manpower needs based on call volume or population. So I think we should remember that. Also, there are two officers. One is suspended, facing criminal charges, and the other one is out on disability. So that leaves us with eight full-time officers actually serving our community at this time, not 10. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tom Wisniewski.
I want to know who still uses WordPerfect? You guys got to update his, his computer.
That is what it looks like. Like it was on WordPerfect.
Tom Wisniewski, 815 Crown Street in Morrisville. New council members, thank you for volunteering for what might be the night, a four-year nightmare. Returning council members, thank you for your continued service. Annie Milionis, at the reorg meeting, stated it beautifully. There's a couple of things I want to add to what Annie said. There's three things that I want to ask from this council as you begin your terms or as you continue your terms. The first is, I'm asking for accountability. We live in a time when sometimes things get hidden, and then false claims of accountability make it seem like everyone's gone crazy. The best way for you to be effective in government is to be faultlessly accountable, honest, and open. Mr. Jaeger, you don't hate kids. I know you don't hate kids. I don't think any of you hate kids. And I think you're right in asking for the procedure about that grant.
Thank you.
I think it sounds like the procedure was followed, but you're correct in questioning it. I think that the conversation about accountability is really important, and I want to ask you to please be accountable to a fault to Morrisville. Second thing is, I want to ask this council to be civil. We had an outburst on the dais tonight. That doesn't help. It makes us seem ridiculous. It makes us seem petty. And it makes us seem not counterproductive. You represent not only the borough of Morrisville, but you represent us to everyone else around. It's very important that you be civil, that you have respectful conversations with each other, that you debate. Debate is great. Always question, is what one of my first bosses told me. Always question, because that's where the truth comes out. But please, do it in a civil, professional manner. The third thing I want to ask from this council is for stability. I'm not just talking about the immediate past council. I'm talking about many of the past councils where the pendulum swings wildly, one direction, then the other direction, then the other direction. That has to stop in Morrisville. We can't afford that anymore. I was really happy the night of the reorg when you decided to reelect Mr. Mitchell as borough manager, reappoint. And I was really, really happy that that was a unanimous vote. I thought that was wonderful. I think Mr. Mitchell's done a good job, and it's a way to, to continue stability here in the borough. And I thank you for doing that. That's the kind of stuff we need. It's okay to have disagreements. It's okay even to have partisan disagreements, because that's the way the world works. I get that. But we need, in the name of civility and accountability, we need that stability, long-term stability from council. And you guys are the ones that can, can stop that pendulum if you choose to. And I would encourage you to do that. Please do that. And finally, I'm trying to get all this into my three minutes, two things. I am the president of the Board of Directors of the Ivans Outreach Center, and as such, we are Darletta's, Darletta Barry Johnson's employer. Darletta has been responsible for literally millions and millions and millions of dollars in grant money in the past 20-some years of her tenure. There is no one that knows procedure, grant writing procedure, better than Darletta. I challenge any of you to, to write a grant that's more, that's more well-worded or effective than she. I believe that she, she answered your questions honestly, and I think she'll be an excellent administrator for this particular grant, as she has proven to be for millions and millions and millions of dollars in other grants. So as the president of that board, I support Darletta in the efforts that she made. If there's some clerical screw-ups, okay. If there's a procedural error, just fix it and move on. And finally, I applaud your, your efforts to rehire our furloughed police officer. Convinced that there is money to do so. I think it's what the borough of Morrisville wants. I know it's what I want. That's no surprise to you. And I encourage you to do so tonight. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hassan Jalad.
Hello. Hassan Jalad, 45 Ridge Ave. I wanted to start by congratulating, congratulations to the, the new people on council. And I want to urge the existing ones to, to work with the, the new ones, to bring them up to, to speed and board on a lot of issues. And I can't, obviously, I probably say it as good as Tom did, but I definitely, definitely it would, it would, you know, having a strong leadership and everyone kind of coming together would, would, to avoid cliche, would make us stronger. And it would definitely allow us to solve a lot of issues. One of the, probably a lot of you know by now is the party house issue that we're still dealing with. I think it's almost two years that this been brought up to, to you guys, and we're still dealing with. It's back on Airbnb, and there's failed inspection. It's in violating, violation of zoning. And we continue to deal with, with that mess. I would urge you to make this as a priority and to bring it back on your agenda till it's solved or resolved. And also, I would appreciate more transparency and clarity on, on the, the direction that this is going towards. Obviously, what was being done in the few recent months is, is not effective, and it's being disregarded. Would appreciate just a lot more communication and clarity on where this is headed and how we can resolve it. Thank you.
Andrew, forgive me, is it Lubin?
Excuse me, Mr. Parker. The group that's leaving now is what I wanted to address. I'm going to guess that maybe this was a little Boy Scout group--
Yeah.
--that was coming.
Yes.
And I'm sorry that we didn't get to, you know, introduce, and I hope that--
No, it's just part of a, a, a fit rate requirement, so.
Okay.
Just learning about how to be better citizens.
Thank you.
Had we known you were in the audience, we would have minded our manners better.
My turn then?
Yes, just please state your address, please.
Exactly. My name is Andrew Lubin, 624 Crown Street here in Morrisville. I'm here to talk about the Nebule hookah bar, which is an issue that needs to be talked about, probably as much as the, as much as the party house. First of all-- I want to compliment Chief McClay and his officers for their continued, almost every Friday and Saturday night, response to our calls for help from the drunkenness, from the extremely loud music, people wandering around, public urination. This is what you're brought, what Nebule Hookah Bar has brought into Morrisville. And Chief McClay's officers are tremendously responsive. One of the things they've told us to do is to call if there's an issue, and we do. Midnight, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, when they stay open after their hours. And then we call again when they, when the police come, they turn, turn the music down. Police leave, they turn the music up again. We call again. So Chief McClay and his officers have told us, call, keep calling, build a paper trail. We've built a paper trail. What are you going to do about it? We have major problems. You have broken bottles every Friday and Saturday, Sunday morning. You may have 50 or 60 cars in the parking lot. The shopping plaza owner hasn't put up the signs that he promised that we read about last month. And every Friday, Saturday, the same thing comes through. You're turning this into a Section 8 town with, with people coming in from out of state, no, with, with no sort of roots here. And they, they come, urinate, break bottles, and leave. Mr. Mayor, this is your town. What are you going to do? Mr. Parker, council president, what are you going to do? We'd love to hear some responses. You're the mayor. We'd love to hear from you. Good. Talk to us. Why don't you, then what's happened on it? What are you doing about it? I called, two weeks ago, I called because I was worried for my personal safety. Because, mostly because there's four of them, one of me, that wandering up and down with, with cans of beer or whatever, in front of the driveway. Where do we, if my office window's here, they're here. That's not cool. Maybe your neighborhood, that's normal, not mine. So again, I'd love to talk to you--
We, we are aware of the situation. In fact, we are getting copies of the police reports on a regular basis, weekly, actually. We have consulted with the solicitor's office, and we realize that this operator may not be following the rules and be, you know, operating on his best behavior. We've had meetings and conversations with him. And the Code Enforcement Department does have other things in the works regarding the operation of his establishment. That's all I'm going to say in public related to that. But I assure you, we are well aware of what is going on, and will take appropriate recourse if compliance cannot be achieved otherwise.
So this Friday or Saturday, I don't have to call at 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the morning?
If something, if something disturbs you, you should call, report it to the police, because the police can act on anything reasonable that's a violation of any ordinance or crime at the establishment or outdoors. And that documentation gets shared with the Code Enforcement Department the following week. So we do have a record of what is going on.
You've got three or four months of records so far. So this is going to come to a close sooner than the party house?
Well, I can't promise you how fast the, the law works and the courts move, but I can tell you that we will act swiftly, as swiftly as we can.
Then thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Yep.
Mr. Parker, just have a quick question. Can the ATF get involved with that because it involves tobacco? Or have they been? No? All right. Thank you.
Deborah Colgan.
Deborah Colgan, 120 West Hendrickson Avenue. I'm here to also discuss Williamson Park. And I want to just say that there are many, many concerns that need to be addressed when considering this project. And for many of us, the primary concern is the loss of public parkland. This is an issue that council must consider carefully. Foremost in your mind must be the future, because once this park is gone, it's gone, it's lost forever. You can't get it back. And are you sure that once all the costs are considered, and they are considerable, as you will learn, that it's worth giving up premier public riverside location? And is Williamson Park really yours to give away? Someone a long time ago had the foresight and the generosity to make Williamson Park a reality. It's been used as a gathering place for years. How do you, in good conscience, take that away from future generations? Open space is dwindling. We need every square inch, especially in this region, becoming more and more congested. We could be a destination, and it is our parks that hold the key. Instead, we're considering putting up a cookie cutter, pretend town center. We replace parkland with, with apartment buildings? I mean, that just doesn't sound smart. Remember that we're also losing Williamson Manor Park, a neighborhood playground that has been a fixture for years. And Elaine, are you going to let that go? I understand that we're all fearful of rising taxes, but this project will not provide the relief we're seeking. There is a better way to do this, and there are plenty of development opportunities in Morrisville that do not require the destruction of two public parks. I urge council for transparency and inclusion purposes to provide residents with an update on the project's status and activities at each council meeting. I recognize that you may not be engaging. You've had a couple of phone calls, you've mentioned, but, and the last I know, council did tell this developer to move forward, that you were interested in giving up the park, so move forward. So something's happening, and you all know what it is. And I'm sure somebody here knows what, what's going on. We should know what that is, too. And, you know, by keeping us in, in the loop, there's a lot of smart people in Morrisville who can provide relevant insight as you make your considerations. So we ask, please, engage with the community as part of your, as part of your-- with the community as part of your process and do diligence. Thank you.
Paul?
Corsevar.
Corsevar, excuse me.
Headed a class. Paul Corsevar, 122 West Palmer. I'm also here to speak about Williamson Park, surprise, surprise. I have a few thoughts regarding this. One is we need to do, meaning Morrisville, a complete and comprehensive study of the proposed plan. That study needs to be independent of Mr. McGrath's study. The cost of the study may be a sticking point. I have no idea what something like this costs, but if Mr. McGrath is putting up $100 million, and let's say the cost of the study is $100,000, that's 1/10 of 1%. I think he should be willing to pick up that tab. When the flooding starts, who picks up the pieces? We do. Who's left cleaning up the water when it recedes? What will we do with 1,000 potential new residents when that happens? Where will they go? What about our existing residents in that stretch of area? What happens if there's more children than originally planned to come into our schools? Maybe it's not 20 or 30, maybe it's 100 to 200, we don't know. The impact could be a lot larger than we think. Another question came to mind in my digging around, the redevelopment authority. Who are they? What authority do they have? Who sanctions their authority? I understand that they help out with industrial places, places that have been abandoned, things of that nature, but what authority do they have over a park? Question mark. One other, a few more things here, don't be intoxicated by $100 billion price tag. We don't even know if that's going to be a real number or not. It sounds really sexy, though, $100 million, wow. Reminds me of the old Austin Powers movie, with the guy, you know, anyway, little humor. What we should be looking at is Morrisville's bottom line, not Mr. McGrath is saying or spending. Oh, by the way, he'll be using a lot of leverage. Is it 80%? Is it 90%? We don't know. But let's say it's 80 to 90%. Let's say the occupancy rates aren't near enough to cover his nut. What happens to those buildings then? Bankruptcy? They're abandoned, they're empty, just what this town needs, more empty buildings. We got enough of them. So what will the tax revenues be? What will the ongoing costs be? We have no idea, but no shovels should hit the ground until we have all these answers. One more thing I just added on, I can only tell you, I don't come to many of these meetings, as you know, but I was absolutely appalled at the bantering back and forth with Officer McClay and Darletta, I don't really know your last name, and I apologize. The disrespect that they got was absolutely, in my opinion, awful, despicable, and that should never happen again. Thank you.
Jane Berger.
Jane Berger, 90 West Maple Avenue. Providing for the safety of our children within our school district is something we all want and need, and this grant is directed for that objective, and I certainly support anything we can do to enhance the safety of our schoolchildren. And I have read the grant application, I have to make this closer, the print's too small. When the school announced that the grant, and they said it was not for the borough, that it was for the school, it's not borough's money, and it's the school money. In response to a question I made to an administrator, why the school didn't apply directly, I was informed that they were told they were not eligible, and they didn't have a required number that the grant would have, and you'd have to use the borough's number. However, as I looked at the grant application form, it lists eligible applicants, and the school district is listed as eligible to apply, and if you don't have the required code number, that they would assign one. So I just, I guess I'm concerned with monies coming into the borough being used for something that may not be allowable, and I know you're under a time constraint now, but I would ask council that before you take any action with the grant, perhaps have a solicitor review the grant narrative and budget to see what is actually being proposed to be paid for, and then review the borough code to find the sections that would specifically authorize the borough to make these expenditures. I've searched the borough code, and I really couldn't find any reference that would support this, and I really did look hard to find this. Unless the borough code has been updated, it's my understanding that once money comes from any source and is deposited into a borough account, it then becomes borough money and can only be expended for what the code permits, in this regard, at least of where the money comes from, even our grant, and that'd be for pass-through as well as direct expenditure. So, so please provide the clarification for that. Regardless of what a grant says you can do, you need to be in compliance with Pennsylvania rules, laws, and regulations. If the solicitor finds that the grant expenditures are authorized, then council can certainly move forward, but it would suggest a couple of things. One, you might want an advisory opinion from your solicitor, the Ethics Commission, on whether some members of council can now vote. The grant says that the Ivan's House will select the grant coordinator, I think it's a $60,000 salary or something, and we've heard tonight that there is tremendous support for Darletta to take this position, and I absolutely know Darletta does a wonderful job on everything she does, and she has the borough at heart, but because you have a council member that is now an officer and a director, or a director of Ivan's House, you have another council member who has been an officer and a director of Ivan's House, I don't think, not right at the moment, and then there may be a member of council that's an employee that's employed by either 21st Century or Ivan's House, which won't be a problem, as long as we've heard tonight, that person would probably not be considered for the grant. You want to be sure there's no conflict of interest with anybody doing anything, make sure you're following things and making them procedurally correct. And then finally, you do a memorandum of understanding, you might want to make it a subcontract that maybe has stronger language, and I guess it would be directed with the school jester, because this is for everything that happens within, in their walls, and have that be developed with the solicitor, of course, looking at what the grant program and budget narrative requires, as any other elements that you may deem necessary in such an agreement. It would also hopefully reduce the work and the time required of Chief McClay, who is listed as the financial officer for this grant. So I hope you all can work this out for the benefit of our children. Thank you.
Want to do the exec session announcement, or have Randy do it?
I just wanted to make an announcement that after our last meeting, which was last week, we had an executive session, which we discussed legal matters involving personnel, police matters, and ongoing litigation. Also, I think there's one tonight, there'll be one this evening as well, as long as I'm, excuse me, Mr. President, I don't want to steal your thunder, after this meeting, to discuss ongoing borough litigation matters. Thank you.
Plager, real estate also.
Yes, and real estate.
Real estate also.
Yes, also real estate matters. That's correct. Thank you.
Do you have anything you want to add? Okay. We're going to move on to item number six, approval of the minutes, 6A, Borough Council Agenda Meeting of 12, 10, 19. Can I have a motion to approve it?
Second.
You can do these by acclamation, you don't have to do it by roll call, if you don't want to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extention?
I abstain.
Abstain.
That's because you weren't at the meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's...
Thank you.
6B, approval of the Borough Council Regular Meeting Minutes of 12, 16, 19. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I forgot that before, sorry. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions?
I abstain, for the same reason I was not here.
Move on to seven, the Treasurer's Report.
Treasurer's Report was provided. If you have any questions, we're happy to address them.
Mr. Parker? We don't, we don't read the bill list anymore, or the Treasurer's Report, is that correct?
It's available on the table if anybody wants it.
Okay, thank you.
7B is a call for a motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilman Joycebuck?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Sherrill?
I abstain.
I abstain.
I abstain for the reason that I was not part of the process of the bills and to review it. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item number eight, which is reports. 8A is the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, the rehiring of officers and panel was on the agenda. I'd like to commend the council members who support this. The last two years have been difficult for the Morrisville Police Department, as we've done our best to continue to maintain a professional operation, even though resources have been depleted. Rehiring this full-time officer is definitely a step in the right direction, in my opinion. Moving forward, the chief and I are hopeful that the council will work with us and that they will govern with a focus on public safety. During the last meeting, it was mentioned that the manager contacted Labor Council regarding the rehiring of officers and panel. I personally believe that was unnecessary use of taxpayer money, but it brings up an important issue. I am requesting more transparency and sharing of information from the office. Labor Council was contacted regarding the MPD, yet that information wasn't shared with the people who run the department, the mayor or the chief. For whatever reason, the practice of allowing the chief and the mayor, the access to the MPD bills has stopped. I'd like to see this resume. Our chief, he needs to be able to review the bills that are being billed to the police department to maintain his budget. This includes items such as, of course, not limited to, just to give you an example, phone bills, the attorney bills, car insurance, all these bills that are related to the MPD. Believe me, Georgia looks at that budget very closely, and we discuss it all the time. If bills are being sent to the finance director, please, I'm requesting that they also go to the chief. It is important so he can look through these things. It's really almost impossible to maintain his budget the way he likes to without this information at his fingertips. And lastly, I want to thank the council and the council president for reassuring that Chief McClay again has afforded to be the ability to speak at council meetings. I think this communication benefits not just the elected officials, but our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. 8B, Police Chiefs Report.
Good evening, council. Council President, thank you for allowing me to speak. It's been probably about six or seven months since I've been allowed to speak to the public, to our stakeholders. So tonight, I'm going to do a little review of 2019. 2019 started out bad for us. We had the second worst homicide in the county of Bucks County. Five people were killed at 200 West Bridge Street. That was hard on my officers, it was hard on me. When you have little children that are killed, for what reason, we still don't know. I got little or no support by council during that time. I had to send officers to counseling for this. I thought that was horrendous, not to have any support by the government leaders. In turn, we went into manpower issues, past that. My officers, my part-time officers were only allowed to work 30 hours. Right, wrong, I still don't know that. I had a full-time officer arrested, one of my corporals. Now we're down another, now we're down a supervisor. He scheduled a little trial on March 9th. Hopefully, that comes to a conclusion that day. One of my part-timers, very valuable, Mike DeAnnie, was hurt during an arrest of a stolen auto. He's been missed very much, and I don't know what his future looks like as of this point. I know the corporal will blow his knee out, he's still out. Now I'm down two supervisors. So I have one supervisor and myself for a police department 24 hours a day, seven days a week, while we're trying to get officers back to work. And then a mistake was made back in the spring, Officer Zapata was laid off. It's created even more of a manpower issue for all of us. We did more dancing to schedules than we ever knew what to do with, but we always kept two officers on the street. That was my main goal, and we accomplished that all throughout the year. And that was to the fortitude of my officers, my full-time as well as my part-time officers, working a lot of time, but they made sure there was always two officers on the street. Tonight, Borough Council has a chance to fix that mistake, which laid Officer Zapata off. The process is going to start helping the manpower issues, start getting a truck enforcement officer back on the street, which you've already seen out there, I know you have, I've gotten a lot of comments about it. And then hopefully, going back and sitting down with the school board and negotiating to get a resource officer back in the school. That is huge. I'd like to discuss a little statement that was made last week by Ms. Berger about Officers Zapata not being a team player. That he collected unemployment. Yeah, he did. A fund that he put into his whole life. If he would have came back part-time, 30 hours, if I had those hours for him at that point, which I did, he would have had to give back dollar for dollar to his unemployment, while still having to pay for childcare. Well, we can all do the math. He would have made a dollar or two a day. Not fair to call him not a team player. Officer Zapata was one of my best officers, and I'll be thrilled to have him back full-time. So I think those comments were undeserved and uncalled for. I will always back my officers when those comments are made. So as of today, we have one chief, one corporal, six full-time officers, and seven part-time officers. Every one of those officers have a job somewhere else, so they're going around, they're different schedules, trying to make this work. We do well with it, we could do a lot better. We don't have any corporals, we have two corporals that are out, and one part-time officer that's out. So looking at our 2019 crime stats, it was a bad year. Our crime was up 25% compared to the year before, but compared to six years ago, we're still weighed down, but we're up for the previous year. And most of those were thefts, the retail thefts and the porch pirates taking everything off the porches. That's a nationwide problem, which is hard to deal with. But on the other hand, our arrests for 2019 were up 6%, again, mostly driven by the thefts and the porch pirates. Police Finance, for the sixth straight year, the department has managed the budget very well, and again, we were down $103,000 at the end of the year. According to Page 8 on our financial statement, we'll be giving back again this year. Enough to hire Gary back. So yes, it's very important that I see all my bills, so I know what's coming in and what's coming out. If you examine the 2019 financial statement, you'll see that our legal expenses cost the stakeholders $46,000, over 1,100% over the budget. We got to get this under control. We got to get this under control, and I need to have access to be able to talk to Labor Council or to Mr. Flager when I need to, without seeking permission from the borough manager or borough council. Sometimes, there isn't time to ask. The gentleman was up here talking about the Hookah Lounge. It's a disaster waiting to happen. Disaster waiting to happen. I'm waiting for that Friday night phone call, say, "Chief, I got two down, you got to get up here." It's going to happen. I have two guys working, sometimes I'm trying to get that third to stay there all the time. I need zone, your zoning people, your code enforcement out there at 1 o'clock on a Friday night to start counting heads. I sent the fire chief in there, we haven't gotten anywhere, they're still doing the same exact thing, they're packing that place. There supposedly was things put into place, nothing's going on. The gentleman was up here talking about the Hookah Lounge. It's a disaster waiting to happen. Disaster waiting to happen. I'm waiting for that Friday night phone call, say, "Chief, I got two down. You got to get up here." It's going to happen. I have two guys working. Sometimes I'm trying to get that third to stay there all the time. I need zone, your zoning people, your code enforcement out there at 1 o'clock on a Friday night to start counting heads. I sent the fire chief in there. We haven't gotten anywhere. They're still doing the same exact thing. They're packing that place. There supposedly was things put into place. Nothing's going on. I need the zoning and the code enforcement people out there in the middle of the night to do their job. Yeah, we can tell them what's going on, but they have the right to go in there and start counting bodies. It's a public place. They're only supposed to have 50 people in there. When a gentleman says there's 60 or 70 people in the parking lot, it's usually two people a car. Say if there's even one, maybe two, there's 100 people in there. It's a disaster waiting to happen. You see what's going on in Philadelphia. You see the amount of shootings. You see the amount of shootings nationwide, places like that. All right? Please step up and do something about that. And in closing, we have a new council. I'd like to ask the council to look towards the future and develop a five and a 10-year strategic plan for everything in a borough, from finances to the road crew, to the police department, to paving streets, everything. We need to have a five and 10-year strategic plan. We don't have one. We need to work together and get this out there to save your community. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. 8C is the junior councilperson's report.
Thank you, council. Good evening, everyone. I'm Victoria Sullivan, and I'm the borough junior councilperson. I would like to begin my statement for this meeting by explaining a bit of my background and my experience growing up in Morrisville. I've lived in Morrisville for all my life, and I'm the third generation to do so. I attended Holy Trinity School until eighth grade and now attend Princeton Day School in New Jersey for high school. This past semester, I attended the School for Ethics and Global Leadership in Washington, DC. I love the idea of being in immersive environment where I could focus on studying topics I'm passionate about, such as politics and current events, from professionals that had unique firsthand experiences. SCGL not only taught me ethics and leadership, but also about building community integrity and to always think about the impact of my decisions. All these experiences have served to give me a new perspective on the importance of community and how growing up in Morrisville has impacted my view of the United States and of the world. I would like to begin my service by gathering and analyzing local teenage perception and opinion of what it is like to grow up in Morrisville in the 21st century. I recently surveyed four high school students, each one representing one of Morrisville's four wards. I asked them to reflect on their experience growing up in Morrisville Borough, what they loved and what they would change. A recurring theme was a close-knit sense of community. From the first ward, I interviewed a sophomore who has attended Morrisville High, Morrisville Intermediate School, my apologies, and currently attends Bucks County Technical High School. She said that a highlight of her experience in Morrisville was being able to attend a youth group meeting and go to Anthony's Pizza afterwards with friends. One thing she would change is adding more spaces for teens to gather. From the second ward, I interviewed a junior who has attended Morrisville Intermediate School and currently attends Bucks County Technical High School as well. She said she loved how tight the community is, but one thing she would change is to put more money into the public schools. From the third ward, I interviewed a junior who has attended Morrisville Intermediate School and currently attends Morrisville High School. He said he loves how small and welcoming Morrisville is and that there's always so much to do and explore. He also loves being able to see friends when he's on his way somewhere. He mentioned that he would like to improve and update facilities and that the school has been hard, been through hardship, but is currently improving. Finally, from the fourth ward, I interviewed a junior who has attended Holy Trinity School and currently attends Conwell Egan Catholic High School. She said that she loves Cafe Antonio's and being close to fun activities like Trenton Thunder Games. She also said that two improvements she'd like to see are fixed potholes and increased safety. Going forward, I would like to continue surveys and introduce projects that would give teens a greater sense of involvement in the state and future of Morrisville Borough. This ties into my broader goal of promoting political awareness amongst teens. Once again, I thank the council for this opportunity and invite any feedback about my first report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going on to nine, which is action items. First one up is 9A. Call for a motion to approve the Earth Day celebration to be held on Saturday, April 25th, 2020, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Open Field located at the intersection of Delmore and Philadelphia Avenues. A tree will be planted at the Riverfront Preserve in honor of Earth Day. Can I have a?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Yes, it's 8-0. Seven, sorry. Self. 9B is a call for a motion to appoint a new council member from the first ward to fill the unexpired term to January 3rd, 2022.
I'd like to nominate Regina Wallace.
We have one nomination. Do we have another?
I would like to nominate Helen Halaho.
We have a second nomination. Do we have any others? Do we have any others? Last call. All right, we're going to vote on the first one, which was Regina Wallace. We're going to ask for a roll call and just say yes or no.
Councilman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilman Drysbaum?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
No.
Councilman Paul?
No.
Councilman Robinson?
No.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
No.
Councilman Yeager?
Yes.
We're 4-3 no, so we'll go on to the second nomination, which is Helen Halaho. Everyone say yes or no. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Dowers?
No.
Councilman Drysbaum?
No.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Yes.
Councilman Yeager?
No.
4-3 passes. Congratulations to Ms. Halaho.
Yep.
Okay. Judge Chronicle is here. If you'd like to be sworn in tonight, just come forward.
What's the Bible that was here that was from the 1800s?
The stairs are back there. I haven't seen it in a while.
Karen, you need an oath? Yeah. Need a pen?
What else you got?
I candy.
Yes.
She brought her own. Imagine that.
I, Helen Halaho, I solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of this commonwealth, and the Constitution of this commonwealth, and that I will discharge the duties, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity, of my office with fidelity.
Thanks, Judge.
Mr. President?
Excellent, thank you.
May I say something?
Sure.
Regina Wallace, I'd like to thank you for your, um, interest in council, and I'd hope to, you would be interested in the future. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Might have heard before. I think it may be the senior center.
Can you reserve this for you?
This is all for you. Congratulations to your night table reading.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, let's move on. It's getting late. Welcome aboard, Ms. Halaho. Yes. All right, 9C is a call for a motion to reinstate Gary Sipano as a full-time probationary police officer. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Need a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ever roll call, oh, I'm sorry, discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask again, I asked a question last week. Where are we going to pay for this from? I know the chief mentioned that his budget is under budget. However, a budget doesn't actually reconcile with the cash flow.
Right. Anybody else?
Same concern.
So, so last time, um, you hired the Director of Finance without him being in the budget. How was that paid for?
I believe part of it is able to be expensed to the water fund.
Yep.
And the other part was in savings from a retired public works person that wasn't replaced, uh, in addition to money saved from the treasurer and assistant treasurer stipends.
Plus, if I could add, the, um, previous assistant borough manager who retired, that salary remained in the budget the following year, and that was applied as well.
So has Micah looked into the finances in the budget to see where there may be some wiggle room in, in hiring the officer?
Sure. Uh huh, we have. Not a lot of wiggle room.
Okay. Chief, are you under or over budget in overtime?
Overtime?
Yeah.
That's all I'm financially for. If I could tell you for the year, I'm down, I'm below budget $103,000.
Would that more than pay for, um, Mr. Sipano?
He would come in at $50,000 plus benefits, I would say would be somewhere in around $30,000. I'll tell him about a E. Have you answered your question? Yes.
Okay, so is that where we can find the money?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, chief.
There's nobody else. I ask for a roll call, Virginia.
Councilman Dowers?
No.
Councilman Drysbaum?
No.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Yes.
Councilman Yeager?
No.
And Councilwoman Halaho?
Yes.
5-3, it passes.
Mr. President, may I ask a point of order?
No.
The motion to appoint Ms. Halaho didn't save our resolution. I just want to clarify that you do have the resolution required to make the appointment. Let me make sure you got it all done right.
Come to the microphone, please.
Yes, sir. Oh, say it again. I just want to clarify that the, the appointment, you have the resolution to appoint Ms. Halaho to, to fill the vacancy. It can't be done just by motion. I think it's in the borough code. I just want to check.
I think she's saying we nominated her and we need to do a resolution to appoint her.
The appointment's by resolution? You might want to check that. I think it's in section 900 and, and something. Remember, Mr. Parker?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, the last time.
Thank you.
I, I think we're okay. I mean, I'll check that for you, but.
Okay. If not, then you would have them do it again by resolution.
Resolution would.
Didn't affect the vote.
It didn't, it won't affect the vote because it's 4 to 3, and it would have passed, so.
Couldn't have done a resolution.
There's no way to have a resolution because we didn't know who. I didn't, we didn't know who was going to be nominated, so it's, it's an impossibility to have a resolution prepared.
Well, it was.
9D, call for a motion to approve the Easter egg hunt sponsored by the Morrisville Yardley Rotary Club to be held on Saturday, April 11th in Williamson Park from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? All right, on to 9E. Call for a motion to approve the Winterfest Parade sponsored by Hot Rides to be held on Saturday, December 5th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Opposed? Extentions?
9F is a motion to consider the Morrisville Borough School Violence Prevention Program and whether to accept the grant.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion?
Yeah. Go ahead, Helen.
I, I don't have all the details on the grant, but I do want to know, is there any kind of writing or, or document that we would receive from the schools that would say that we, even though we are responsible for the grant, that we are not monetarily responsible for the grant? I, I, well, I don't see Darletta here, so.
She left. Maybe the chief can answer that.
Where the process works is that the equipment, um, is proposed. It gets sent into the DOJ. The DOJ then writes the check, and then it gets, the check goes out to the vendor. So we're just a go-between between.
No, for the, for the $80,000 match.
The $80,000 match is, is going to be done in kind by the administrator of the grant. So what, does that, does that answer?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the borough is not responsible for any dollars.
I've said that multiple times. The police department nor the borough will be responsible for any money. We will, we will watch how it is processed through, and we're a go-between. We've already, I already met with Micah, and he's just, he'll be getting the money in, writing the check out. So we will have money in hand by the DOJ before it goes on to the, to the next person.
Okay.
If I may?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, but without having anything in writing from anyone else, um, us agreeing to this is also agreeing to the $83,000 match. Just want to make sure that we're clear about that. In, in, in lieu of any actual evidence or anything in writing, it's just what is supposed to happen. So I, I just want to make sure that that's stated. I, I have concerns about this from a financial perspective. I have concerns about this. I mentioned ethics. Anytime we go around borough code to get a, uh, to, to, to end up where we want to be, um, but we go around borough code, and we know we're going around borough code in the way we're supposed to do things, that's an ethical issue, for good or not, for better or for worse. If we know that there's a process in place and how things are supposed to take place according to borough code, and we purposely skirt that, we are being unethical. I just want to make sure I'm clear. That is not a condemnation of the grant writer, by the way. I think she does a fantastic job. Darletta is an amazing person that does a lot of goodness town. This is a, a commentary that, based on the people that know how this is supposed to work, purposely going around council to get a, a result that they were looking for, and I have a, an issue with that, a very deep issue with that. And to be accused of saying something and offending somebody with, with those words, I may not be perfect, but rules are rules, and I think if, I know if we know them, we should follow them. Thank you.
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
As I was so rudely interrupted and unable to finish my questions, I, I honestly can't vote for something that I didn't get answers to. And I also have a problem with not seeing a grant application or any other paperwork to vote for the.
a grant application or any other paperwork to vote for this $334,000, $37,000, and not know exactly what's happening with it, or, and I have no problem at all with Darletta, and I said that before I spoke, I mentioned other grants, I worked with Darletta in the past with grants, and I have no problem with her, I respect her, she does a wonderful job in the borough, so whoever wants to stand up there and say that, they can, but that's not what I was doing, and I stated that as a fact. Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
Go ahead.
I don't know how, we're not really far along in this process, because there's an MOO that will eventually be written, just as it was before, with the resource officer, and I, I think that the entities in town should be able to, as our past history, we should be able to work together as we have in the past with both schools, and I don't see the school reneging on it, but I also might like to add that if you have as much trust in Lord Darletta, which we all, I believe we all do sitting up here, then I think we should also understand that Darletta would not be leading us down the wrong path, so I will be in support of this.
Thank you, anyone else?
I'd like to say one more thing.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Justin, I've been on council now, this is my 10th year, and I sat up here several years ago, there was a contract being offered, and it was awarded to Johnson Controls. This is the same thing happening again, we have no paperwork, and Johnson Controls' million-dollar contract for 17 years binding this borough was voted in without any paperwork. Thank you.
I have one more question.
One second, I just wanted to clarify something, I just conferred with the borough manager, the application and the contract was distributed among council?
Yes.
It was, it was in the Dropbox, so.
Weeks ago. Weeks ago. It was given in when it was basically signed, and no one, including myself, knew about it before it was signed. I was approached because it needed to be signed, as the chief explained, the DOJ wanted the mayor to sign it, I signed it, I also did a press release and made sure that information was distributed to council, you could twist it any way you want, saying you didn't know, I shared what I had in a timely fashion. And on another point, I don't understand why Johnson Controls continues to come up, but you don't hear good things about that, that the borough's been saving $75,000 a year, that's in writing, we saved $75,000. Thank you for allowing me to clarify.
I want to add something myself, having been with the school district on the school board, I've worked with Ms. Johnson on some of the grants she's gotten for the district, and I think her, her character is unapproachable, so, I'm in favor of it, I mean, it's not the way we wanted it to be done, and we'll make sure that this doesn't happen in the future, but, anybody else?
Mr. President, I have one more thing.
Just, I'll let somebody else speak for a second, please, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment that during the presentation, I heard the mayor say once or twice, I don't know about this, I heard some other things about some moving parts with the grant, Darletta even said that there needs to be more discussions with the school district and Jason Harris, and I know I'm not going to be comfortable at this time, I think it's a good grant, I think we should move forward with it, but at this time, I think there's too many moving parts, we don't have any agreements with the school districts, you know, the school board could or could not vote to make the payment, we don't know that, and we don't have anything from them saying that they will, there's nothing in writing, so I would like to see this held off until we have more discussions with the school district.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the motion tonight, is that just to file the January 30th paperwork, or is that to approve the grant, or are they mutually exclusive?
My understanding, it's my understanding that the makers of the motion, it was to accept the grant.
Can we file the paperwork on the 30th and get more information from the school, as Justin said, and then make a motion in February to approve the grant, or will we lose it?
The school doesn't have information, this isn't, this is coming from the Department of Justice.
Well, the agreement with the schools.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, when I say I don't know, and things will change, that's because we're being 100% honest and open, you even heard tonight, they're going to do the walkthrough and determine, they don't know exactly pieces and parts they want to buy, so the numbers are not there, but, like I said, as far as I know, because I was reassured from day one before I signed that, that there's a commitment from the school, both schools, you know, not just the Morrisville School District, don't forget, this is also includes Holy Trinity.
Well, do we, do we have that commitment in writing?
Again, I really don't know that, but I take them on their word, everyone here says they trust Darletta, they trust the process, and that there is nothing, if you agree to this, as Darletta explained, not that I would ever advise doing this, you could always cancel it, though it's never a good idea to cancel a grant, but it really does need to proceed.
I just, I'm sorry, but I do believe Darletta did say that if she had to, the administrative portion could be used as the match?
Yes, absolutely, and that's why it's so important to have her.
Okay.
Mr. President, my question, Chief, maybe you can elaborate on this, the total grant is like $337,000, around that number right there, we don't have to, this grant isn't a grant of us having to take all $337,000, we could only use $100,000 of it, $200,000 of it, isn't it, go by monthly, and what we report to the DOJ, and what we take, it's not like we're not getting a $300,000 lump sum, are we?
No, we will not, we have to submit that paperwork to the DOJ, and at that point, they'll reimburse us, and then the contractors will do what they have to do.
Okay, so it's not a?
And it's not all or nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jaeger?
Thank you. So, PA Code of Ethics talks about contracts and approving a contract, and this would be, this would be a contract, and specifically states that anyone associated with an organization that's going to benefit from a contract should abstain, and I'm paraphrasing, so anyone that has any association, and they also talk about direct family members, some direct family members being a part of it, needs to abstain from voting on this, ethically.
Yeah, if I may, I think everyone's familiar with conflict of interest, the general rule of thumb that was explained to me is if you or a family member is going to financially benefit, you can't vote on it.
It states the word "associated" specifically, it does not have specifications for.
Mr. President, Mr. President, may I ask a question of the borough solicitor? Since, since Ms. Berger already pointed out that she thinks I need to recuse myself because I'm a board member of Ivans, I don't necessarily agree with that, but could you give me some guidance as to whether or not I have a conflict of interest?
But this isn't Ivans House.
Exactly, well, I'm just, I want to.
That was clarified in the very beginning.
But ethical laws require that I avoid the appearance of impropriety, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Okay, so you have to forgive me, tell me the relationship.
I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Ivans, I'm the secretary of the Board of Directors, and I'm a volunteer, unpaid volunteer.
You don't, you don't get paid for that?
I get paid for none of those things.
Okay, and, but you're on their board?
Correct.
And, does, let me, let me just, does this benefit the organization that you're on the board of?
Not that I can see.
And, do they get, is the organization, I'm sorry, is the organization going to receive funds from this vote?
No, not that I am aware of, in fact, to the contrary, it sounds like Darletta has volunteered to contribute some of her time and services, so in that sense, it might take away from Ivans.
Okay, but, but, forgetting that for a moment, because that's, that's not relevant, that's not relevant for this discussion, although admirable on her part, but for that, is there any benefit to the organization that you sit on the board of, does this benefit in any way the organization?
None that I can see, we already established that Darletta has an outstanding reputation as a grant writer, beyond that, I don't know what benefit Ivans derives directly from this grant, I don't see it.
That's how I take this, sorry, Mr. President, but this, and if we had asked, or she, I apologize, but Darletta was very open about, the wording was incorrect when it said 21st century and all that, because this is not.
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't, can, you know, with all due respect.
I'm asking for legal.
He wanted legal advice here. Unless, unless you're practicing law as well as, I know you can marry people, but you can't practice law yet.
Was that a proposal?
I was just trying to understand what, because I don't know your relationship.
And, and by the way.
So forgive, forgive me, and I say to the council and to the public, I don't understand the relationship, so that's, that's why I'm at a disadvantage here.
Understood.
So you don't, you will not, you, organization benefits, does not benefit any, in any way from the council, or you voting on this or approving this?
As far as I can see, that's correct, yes.
And we always have to avoid not only the direct impropriety, but the appearance of.
Absolutely, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, so that, so the question's really your decision at that point, as to whether you think it's an appearance of impropriety, I can't comment, because I don't know the relationship of the organizations.
Thank you.
So without knowing more, I can't give you a better answer.
Thank you.
And I apologize.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to make public disclosure, and I have a different view, and you told me nothing that would change my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Flager, if I may, my sister works for Darletta, so that's a family member, just want to put that out there.
That, that's the appearance of, that's a conflict, your sister, your sister would benefit indirectly from money going into that, to the fact that she works.
If that's the legal definition.
Well, I mean, it's, okay, let me just put it just like, it's the, even the appearance of a conflict is to be avoided, that's what it says, and so I'll leave it to you, but if I was, if you asked me what my advice was, since I think there's, there's eight of you, and I don't know if your vote, all votes matter, but it may not make a difference.
I should abstain.
I would, I would, I would suggest that you might want to abstain.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Flager, does it make a difference on this, whether are we paying, would we be paying Darletta directly if she were to take the fee, or would the payment be made to Ivans House?
Here's my problem, I haven't seen all this paperwork, so I can't answer that, I really, I'm at a, I can't answer it, because we haven't, we haven't seen it, I don't know how it's going to work. It sounds to me like, from what we asked, that's why I asked that question before, it sounded to me like the money was coming to the borough, that's what I was, that's what I was, that was the answer I received, and then the borough would then send the money out.
Correct.
So, that, that's all I know.
And.
It's not, I know it's not a satisfactory answer to you, or to maybe many others on council, but I don't have all the facts on this.
Mr. Parker?
Ms. Sherlock?
Oh, I'd like to clarify, because Jane Berger had made a mention of it, I was on the Ivans House board, but I have not been since June of last year, so that was due to, you can only be there for so many years, there was a term limit.
And that is not, the fact that you may have been on a board at one time, does not give you a legal conflict of interest.
Well, I didn't see it, and didn't plan to devote in that direction, but I would like to say that I have a question with regards, again, going back to Scott, now maybe that would be better that he, you know, abstains for the appearance purposes, but if Ivans House is not getting this money, I cannot see the conflict, Ivans House is not getting the money, Darletta could have come here as a, as a resident and had done the same thing, but, so.
But the difference is, if I can comment, Darletta put, or whoever put out a press release, had Ivans Center on the top of it, to make it look like it came out on their letterhead.
Okay.
Well, Mr. President, may I, I, you know, when I was speaking a few moments ago, I was trying to help clarify, I personally don't see how it's a conflict, I certainly understand the question, I think it's a warrant question, I think you're getting to the point where Darletta works for the Ivans House, the Ivans House isn't doing it, and that press release, I think it's been clarified, but, and, you know, just so everyone knows, they prepared that, I asked her to prepare that, but I think we were very clear tonight that she did not come here as an employee of the Ivans House, she came here as the person who would be doing this, if approved, that's the next motion, so, I don't, you know, it's up to you, obviously, but I don't see how the Ivans House is tied into it, because the fact that she works for the Ivans House, but she is not representing the Ivans House that I see in any way.
If I may, then, sir?
My, my comments, and it was a very good question by the councilman, was to avoid the appearance of any impropriety, and that's what I was trying to protect him, and he's trying to protect himself from that, I don't want someone to question him later on, and so that's why I counseled that, that was the reason.
Okay.
One, one legal question, if I may, please, an abstention is a no vote, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
If I may, sir, if we are not, if we are taking money to pay an employee for two years, and we are not giving that to their employer, then I guess we're, we're also talking about is hiring someone, potentially, if that person's going to be administrator of the, of the grant, and that grant pays for their salary for two years and benefits, now we're talking about hiring someone, and that's a whole different animal, because then we're, then we are taking full responsibility of the administration of this grant, if we are not paying another organization to filter that money through, to give it to her, we are hiring an employee and giving them benefits. That said, if that's where council wants to go, then certainly there wouldn't be a conflict of interest, right? But we're not, I don't think anybody has actually said that that's what we're going to do, and we're about to vote on something that nobody seems to really know what we're going to do, that's a little scary to be throwing around $83,000 and not, not actually even know how we're going to administer this, this thing, not to mention, there are people on this board that will literally fight that we don't need a finance director for a $7 million budget, but want to hire somebody to administer, administer a $300,000 grant, seriously?
Mr. Parker, I thought we weren't hiring anyone for this grant, because Mrs. Darletta Barry Johnson said that she would administer that.
If I may, is there a difference between an administrator of a grant and an employee?
Yes.
Short answer is yes, so she would not be an employee?
It's like, it's like I'm not an employee, I'm a consultant, or an engineer is a consultant, right, you're not a full-time employee, you know, okay.
All right.
Mr. Parker?
Go ahead.
What is, what do we lose if we were to put this off until the next meeting? Do we forfeit the possible opportunity of getting the grant altogether, do we just get it later? I empathize with everybody's concern over the fact that they haven't seen the documents, even if they got the documents, and I think that there's certainly a certain level of discomfort that a number of council members have expressed, and what do we, what do we lose, or what is the risk of putting this over until next month's meeting?
If I may, Darletta, she stated that, you know, in her presentation, trying to clarify this, that it's not a good idea to, to not file, I mean, this thing needs to be filed, which I didn't realize that it's due by the end of the month, but.
Mr. Parker, can we call for the vote, please?
If everybody else is finished, yes.
I have a question, so is it possible to vote yes to just proceed forward and then revisit it next month, just in order to file the paperwork?
We could probably reneg on anything, but I don't know that cost.
Chief, could you answer that at all?
The grant has already been accepted by the DOJ, so we can move forward, put the paperwork in for this month, and Darletta can put in her time that she's already put into it as a kind and match, we will not receive a dime for that, that'll stay with the DOJ, okay, do we understand that part? Secondly, we can put this off till next month, we already have the grant, if you people decide next month, you say, no, we're not doing this, we send a letter back to the DOJ and say, thank you very much for that opportunity, but at this time, our borough has decided to decline it, so yes, we could wait, and we can put the paperwork in, and it's all very, very, very legal, because like I said, we've already got the grant.
Wait, but there, you're saying we can, we can put in for the grant and then just not take it, my question is, what can, can we postpone putting in the application, that deadline, is that a hard deadline, is that a statewide deadline, is that, is that specifically for us, what's that, what's the June 30 deadline, I mean, the January 30 deadline?
The January 30th deadline is to file our first report, right?
Yes.
And what would happen if we failed to file that report?
We get nasty grams every day.
We would get nasty grams.
Okay, but it doesn't, it doesn't hurt you to put this paperwork in, you put the paperwork in, Darletta puts on there, the administrator did 18 hours of work at such and such an hour, this will go in as a kind. of work at such and such an hour, this will go in as a kind match. They will not send us a dime. That will go against that matching fund. So we can try to get whatever problems that we have together over the next 30 days, come back for an agreement, everybody approves it, we're good to go. Or, 30 days from now, you guys say, no, I don't like it. Then we call the DOJ, send them a nice letter with a thank you note, and say, thank you for that opportunity, but at this time, we're going to pass. And it goes away.
So I just want to clarify. So if we approve this tonight to accept it, we still have the ability at a later date to opt out of the grant?
I would say yes. I wouldn't say do it in a year from now.
No, I mean.
After you're already at $100,000 into it, and we've already ordered things. But the one thing, problem is that Thursday, we have a company coming in to do the study, study at the Catholic school. They are very hard to get. They're months behind. So, yeah, we can do this, and we can tell them, thanks, but hold off. And I would, if we're still not deciding whether we want to do this, I will tell that company, do not come, put us off for a couple of months. So the answer to the question is, do you want to wait a month? Yes, you can. It's going to put everything back probably two or three months.
But if we approve it tonight, we can still refuse the grant later on?
I would say, I've never seen that happen before, but I would say, I don't know. Because right off the bat, I know the assessa, the vulnerability assessment is a $6,000 note. So the DOJ say, okay, here you go, here's the $6,000 to the, to that contractor, and then we back out of it?
Do they refund us before we meet our match?
What?
So do they, do they send a refund check before the borough meets its match? In other words, do those bills keep piling up until the $83,000 hits, and then they start cutting back the difference?
I don't understand.
Or was it pay-as-you-go?
It, yeah, it would be, right? So in, in essence, it would be, once we reach that match, then they'd start cutting us reimbursements after. That's, I don't.
I, I've never heard it that way.
So they would, they would?
As you, my understanding, as you go along.
Mm-hmm, right.
So say you say you need $20,000 in lighting at Holy Trinity.
Even if you haven't done your, your $83,000 match yet, you haven't read, because if it's in kind and monies that, as we go, I'd, I'd be hard pressed to know, and I'd like to know for sure, that they would cut us a check if we haven't reached that plateau yet, for the, for, because if it's as you go, what portion are they going to cut us back if we haven't reached that $83,000 yet?
I was understanding it was a 25% match, right?
Okay.
Was that in the paperwork?
I think it was, yeah, it was 25, okay.
If you spend $100,000, they'll, they'll give you 75.
Okay, if that's how it works.
And you can't say we have to hit 85,000, because we may never hit that, because of the projects. That's why you get money as you do.
Especially if you're, and if they're giving us a chance to say that we don't have the money to pay for it anyway. How could you, how could you ask the borough to say, you got to put your $85,000 off first? But it's a 25%.
Thank you, chief.
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Second.
We have a motion to table, in a second. Can, we have a voice vote on tabling it.
Roll call.
Yeah, roll call, yeah, roll call.
Okay. Councilman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbrock?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
No.
Councilman Paul?
No.
Councilman Robinson?
I'm staying.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
No.
Councilman Jaeger?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Holaho?
No.
That's four three, the table fails. So can we have a roll call on the motion?
Ted, can you change the motion to say that we're, we will vote yes today and revisit in a month from now?
I, we can always do it later, the solicitor just.
Okay, all right, thanks. We have the solicitor read the motion one more time, please. Sorry.
It's been so long. I know.
Motion is to accept the DOJ grant, and it's called Morrisville Borough School Violence Prevention Program.
Thank you. Councilman Bowers?
No.
Councilwoman Drysbrock?
No.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Stayed.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Yes.
Councilman Jaeger?
No.
And Councilman Holaho?
Yes.
Pass is four three. 9G, sir?
I will point out that the abstention, councilman, the abstention is for a perceived conflict of interest.
Yes.
Yeah.
Perceived conflict of interest.
Thank you, counsel.
For both motions.
Thank you.
9G, you wrote it. Yeah, Darletta Barry Johnson. Darletta Barry Johnson.
I believe the 9G, the motion that was put up to, was to designate as administrator of the grant Darletta Barry Johnson.
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
I'd just like to say, if I were going to vote for the grant, I would definitely have her do it.
Councilman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbrock?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Paul?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
I'm staying.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Yes.
Councilman Jaeger?
Yes.
And Councilman Holaho?
Yes.
Seven zero one abstention. For a potential conflict of interest. Next item is council committees. I've sent everybody an email, asking which of the committees for this year you wish to be a part of. I've only received responses from two council members so far. So I don't want to appoint people without you voluntarily wanting to be on a, on a committee, but some of the committees have to happen, so hopefully those interested will come forward. We're going to move on to board and commission appointments. The Environmental Advisory Council has two three-year appointments to expire on 12/19/2022. So there are two positions, do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mary Herenda.
We have one nomination, do we have any others?
Next time, bring a bucket.
We have one nomination, do we have any others? One more time, we have one nomination, do we have any others? All right, we're going to close nominations. This is for one of the two three-year seats. We have Mary Herenda. Can we have a, yes, well, yes or no? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowers?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Ms. Holaho?
Yes.
So seven one, congratulations, Ms. Herenda. The next appointments are for the Economic Development Corporation. There are three, three-year appointments, which expire on 1/21/2023. Uh, do we have any nominations for?
I'd like to make a motion that we, I'd like to nominate Judy Fugirio.
I'd like to nominate Joan Doretto White.
We have two nominations, do we have another?
I'd like to nominate Robin Reithmeyer.
We have a third nomination. Do we have any more? We have four nominations now, one more, and then I'm going to close it. Do we have any more nominations? No more nominations, I'm going to close the nomination process. And we'll start with the first one, Judith Forigio. I killed it, sorry.
Fugirio.
So it's a yes or a no? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysbrock?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Ms. Holaho?
Yes.
It's a close one.
Eight, nothing, okay. The next one is for Joan Doretto White. Thank you. Yes or no roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysbrock?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Ms. Holaho?
Yes.
Next nomination up is for Robin Reithmeyer. Yes or no roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bowers?
No.
Ms. Drysbrock?
No.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
No.
And Ms. Holaho?
Yes.
Five three, no need for the fourth nomination. Congratulations to those individuals. Next one up is the municipal, oh God, municipal was our.
Nominate Victor Cicero.
We have one nomination, Victor Cicero, do we have another?
I'd like to nominate myself, Justin Bowers.
Hmm, look who's so special.
My apologies for not sending in a letter of interest, it was a spur of the moment decision.
All right, we have two nominations, do we have any more? One last time, do we have any more nominations? None being heard, I'm going to close nominations. We're going to do this in order of nominations, so first one up is a yes or no for Victor Cicero. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bowers?
No.
Ms. Drysbrock?
No.
Mr. Parker?
No, I'm sorry, um, yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
No.
And Ms. Holaho?
Yes.
Five three. Next one up is for the zoning hearing board, a one-year, a one, three-year term to expire on 1/2/2023. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Hossam Jalad.
We have one nomination, do we have any more? We have one nomination, do we have any more? One last time, any more? I'm going to close the nomination process, we have one, Hossam Jalad. Yes or no roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysbrock?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Ms. Holaho?
The next one up is the planning commission, a one, four-year appointment to expire on 1/2/2024.
Curtis Kelly.
A nomination, do we have any others?
I nominate Paul Carcevar.
We have another nomination, do we have any more? Do we have any more nominations? One last time, to close nominations, we're going to vote on them, yes or no, starting with the first nomination, Curtis Kelly. Can I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysbrock?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
No.
Mr. Paul?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Ms. Sherlock?
No.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Ms. Holaho?
No.
We move on to the next person. Paul Carcevar, yes or no roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bowers?
No.
Ms. Drysbrock?
No.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
No.
And Ms. Holaho?
Congratulations, Mr. Carcevar. Next up.
Mr. Parker, I'm sorry, may I just comment on Curtis Kelly? And just thank the gentleman for his service, as serving for a number of years on planning
Next is the civil service commission, we have a one-year, one six-year appointment to expire on 1/5/2026. Wait, wait, let me finish. Let me get it all out, and then we're going to do the six-year first. And one appointment to complete the unexpired term through 1/3/2022. So for the six-year, six-year appointment, can I have nominations?
Kenneth Terry.
Do we have a nomination, do we have another?
I'd like to nominate Jane Berger.
If I may, Mr. President, I would respectfully decline, I am an alternate member of the civil service board this time, and that's fine for my plate right now.
Okay. My apologies, I must have pulled up an old letter that he sent in.
I do thank you very much for that.
Okay, so we have one nomination, do we have any others? One last time, any other nominations? All right, I'm going to close nominations for the six-year appointment. Can we have a roll call, please? Yes or no for Kenneth Terry?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysbrock?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Ms. Halaho?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Terry. Nothing. The next one is the appointment to complete the unexpired term, which goes through 1/3, 2022. Do we have nominations, please?
I nominate Eileen Drysbach.
I'd like to nominate Scott Robinson.
We have two nominations. Do we have another? Have any other nominations? One last time, any more nominations? All right, I'm going to close nominations and ask for a yes or no vote for Mrs. Drysbach.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysbach?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
No.
Mr. Paul?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Ms. Sherlock?
No.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
And Ms. Halaho?
Move on to the next nomination for Scott Robinson. Have a roll call, yes or no, please?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Drysbach?
No.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul? Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
No.
And Ms. Halaho?
Six, two. Congratulations, Mr. Robinson. All right, move on to number 10. Do we have any unfinished business?
Can I make a clarification?
Sure.
Ms. Berger, a question about a resolution. While she's technically correct, you need a resolution, a motion by council is equivalent to a resolution. I don't think I clarified that. So you're not, you're not that you're wrong, but that their motion qualifies as that resolution.
That's interesting. Yeah, how would you write it if you don't know the people?
Right.
Mr. Parker, may I ask a question? Under unfinished business, I'm just curious if there's any updates. I know at the reorg meeting, there was conversation and I think a motion to advertise doing RFP for professional services. Is there any update? Has that been done or any applications come in? Actually, there was no motion to advertise. I was requested to solicit proposals, and I have, and I expect to have them in early February. What responses we get?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on the, from the public comment period, the comments of Hassan Jalad.
We could do that under borough officials, unless you're making, unless you need to make a motion for anything.
No, I was just going to, I was just going to ask if there's anything. I know we might be discussing this in the executive session, but I wanted to ask the borough manager whether there's anything publicly he could say about the current status of any action that's being taken against the party, so-called party house, or where things stand. I know that there's a March 9th date, I guess, but that, beyond that, well, I'm sorry.
No, I'm not aware of any March date. Where it stands presently, and we're in touch with the neighbors on a pretty routine basis. In fact, we spoke with Hassan earlier today. This has been an ongoing nuisance, as everyone knows. This is a rogue operator of legal operation. We've been to court. We've prevailed at the various levels of court so far, and we're waiting for our next court date, which I expect to be getting soon. Unfortunately, it's taking us like four to six weeks to get dates for court hearings. But we are pursuing this as swiftly and vigorously as we can under the law. So sooner or later, this gentleman is going to be in a rough spot. So hope he has a good attorney.
Sooner rather than later.
Yes. But I appreciate the frustration that the neighborhood is experiencing. But we are on, on top of it.
Mr. Parker, I have a question. I don't know that it would require a motion, but it was mentioned this evening about, with the, with the hookah location, and, and whether we could have someone from code there to, you know, count heads and actually make a citation. Is that something we could just do administratively?
And we have. We have been watching this facility closely.
In the evening, though?
We have done after-hours spot checks, and we have more planned. The fire marshal has met with this gentleman to remind him of the occupancy requirement. That occupancy is posted. We've counseled him on the error of his ways and hope to achieve voluntary compliance. And if we don't, we will again avail ourselves of the legal process through the courts. He's unfortunately stubborn in his beliefs and operation and has made the situation more difficult than it needs to be.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. But in terms of after-hours response, you know, the police chief is gone. I know he would like the ability 24/7 to be able to summon someone from code enforcement to respond. We don't have that ability. If council wants me to make that availability, we will, but you're going to pay for it. We have done after-hours spot checks and will continue to do so, but we, you know, we have to catch them with the good, so to speak, and in the act. But we are getting weekly copies of the police reports, so we know what is going on there. And I don't think they've been able to issue any citations yet, or at least not many citations yet, for any criminal conduct by patrons, because they too have the burden of having to be able to witness or document, you know, what they're citing someone for. So unfortunately, it's been a tough situation, but we're continuing to monitor it.
Mr. President, I have a question for Scott. You said we could get a spot check, and it would cost us.
Of course.
How much would it cost?
Well, probably double the normal hourly rate for Keystone employee to appear out there at 3:00 in the morning on the call of the police with no notice.
I think we should do it.
And that's what I was going to add. You know, that would be coordinated with the chief or the corporal would call that there's a situation at, you know, while it's happening. So it is difficult.
Well, we also would have to find out from the vendor if they can even make that service available on a 24/7 basis. I don't know that it's a possibility.
I'd just like to comment, some years, some years ago, Eileen would be, would remember this, that we had a troubled location city limits. And it was a very similar situation, and it took some perseverance, and it took a while to get it done, but we were able, they, they left town. But we had the backing of the fact that they had an alcohol license was what was able, that was our ammunition. But that's why I asked about the ATF before, because of tobacco. I thought maybe we could do something there.
If council's okay with it, I'm going to ask the borough manager to look into whether or not we could have somebody out there and kind of an estimated cost and send that to council when he's able to. Is that all right with everybody?
Yes, I.
All right. Eleven, new business. Anybody have any new business?
I do. I was just wondering, I know that truck traffic is a problem down in the First Ward. If Eileen had any updates as to like, if she had any plans. I haven't been involved, but anything with truck traffic?
I've done as much as I can. We've given all the paperwork to the state. They came out, they did their study, and we're not getting anything.
What was the paperwork for?
We sat there for months, writing down truck names, the time, what direction they were coming from, what direction they were going to. Months.
That's what got the signs.
And we, we got the sign down there at Philadelphia Avenue telling the through trucks to go right on Philadelphia Avenue, and that's all we're getting.
Is there a way that we can do a study to see if perhaps a traffic light and/or stop signs can be placed along maybe Post Road?
The state did a study. That's why they put that sign up there. That's not enforceable.
That's, I'm just not clear. So I'm just asking, is that a study specifically to get a stop sign or a light? Or was that just a general study?
Stop sign where?
At Post Road and/or Cleveland Avenue.
On South Pennsylvania?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a PennDOT road. They will, they would have to do that.
Okay.
I know we could ask and recommend, but I don't think that's.
Can we look into that, then?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Could we at least reach out to our state reps and state senator and see whether or not they?
Yeah, they were involved in it the last time, so they're very familiar.
Okay. I mean, I can reach out to, I can reach out to Senator Sanisaro myself. I guess we can all reach out to him.
Because if my memory serves me correctly, I thought it was to try to get the trucks to not go down Pennsylvania Avenue. But I don't know if we did a specific study to put a stop sign and/or light at like different locations to, that would detour the trucks from wanting to go that way.
Well, when PennDOT had, was doing bridge work on, I guess it was Tyburn, and they had that closed, and they were redirecting truck traffic on South Pennsylvania Avenue. Then when the bridge work was finished, what they are doing now as a result of study was trying to redirect that truck traffic back towards Tyburn Road and off South Pennsylvania Avenue. But it has not worked great.
No, it's not. Yeah. So that would be great. I can reach out to the state senators as well to.
The more people who reach out to them, the better. Okay, if we have no other new business, then we'll go on to 12, which is borough officials' discussion or announcements of any kind.
May I, Mr. Parker?
Sure.
I'd just like to say, thank you, Victoria, Victoria, for being here. And I wish you best of luck in your schoolwork, as well as what you're doing with the students in town. So I think it sounds like a great idea to take, continue to, to interview the students and find out what they like and don't like. Sorry for the late night.
I just want to remind everybody that we have an executive session at the end of this meeting, and we're going to adjourn because we don't have anything to vote on from that meeting. So if anybody, does anybody else have anything else to add?
I just want to make a comment. I want to echo Nancy's statement, "Make a job, Victoria." And during our motions, I would encourage you, if you have a question about something, raise your hand, get our attention when we bring up the comments. You can't vote, but you can ask questions. You might have to put a helmet on.
I heard that. You did a great job.
Mr. President, do you mind if people take a short break before we?
Absolutely. So we're.
I'll make a motion to adjourn first.
We're going to make a motion to adjourn. We'll give ourselves a little bit of a break to run to the bathroom, and then we'll be back in the back room. Motion to adjourn?
Nancy made that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All I have to do tomorrow is read about how unethical.